Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Keri Blanton. I'm the designated hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of a hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding these proposed permit actions. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's joint hearing for the following proposed permit actions for the Arrowhead landfill located near 622 Taylor Road, Uniontown, Alabama, 36786. The proposed issuance of a major source operating permit, MSOP Permit Number 107-0003, for the municipal solid waste landfill, and the proposed renewal of the municipal solid waste landfill permit, Permit Number 53-03. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the proposed permit actions. In addition to oral testimony, the department will also consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments, and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On March 7, 2022, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who had previously requested advance notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record of these proceedings. Copies of the public notice, permit application, preliminary determination, and draft permit have been made available for inspection by the public at the offices of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery, as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public, and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written comment may do so. Lengthy statements, or those containing considerable technical or other complex data, should be submitted in writing. Summaries of such statements may be presented orally. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making permit decisions, and must base the determinations only on whether the permit applicant has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to ADM by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department's staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum, as in a question-and-answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit applications. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question, which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit actions. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery, as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It's important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit actions and develop responses to comments for the proposed permits. The hearing record, final permit determinations, and responses to comments will be posted to the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video, to be posted on the department's YouTube channel, to make it accessible to the public. Now let us move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, representatives of the department's air division and land division; then, any elected officials or their representatives who have pre-registered to speak; and then, all remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they registered during the pre-registration offered online or by phone; and then, those that are registered onsite at this hearing. I will now recognize Mr. John Robert Gill to present a statement on behalf of the department's air division.
My name is John Robert Gill, and I am with the air division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. I am here to present a statement on behalf of the department concerning the proposed initial issuance of Arrowhead Environmental Partners LLC's Major Source Operating Permit Number 107-0003. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Air Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's air pollution control regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal air pollution control regulations. The department is proposing issuance of Arrowhead Environmental Partners LLC's Major Source Operating Permit Number 107-0003 for the Arrowhead landfill. The Arrowhead landfill is a facility that handles municipal solid waste. The facility is currently subject to federal requirements found in 40 CFR Part 62, Subpart 000, which came into effect in May of 2021. The facility will become subject to ADM Administrative Rule 335-3-19, once that rule is approved by the EPA. Both of these rules require ongoing testing and reporting of emissions, and also require the facility to obtain a major source operating permit. Currently, the emissions from the facility are too low to require the installation of a gas collection and control system. The applicable regulatory requirements are addressed in the Statement of Basis and Proposed Major Source Operating Permit Number 107-0003, made available to the public on March 8, 2022, as required by Title V of the Clean Air Act. A major source operating permit is intended to consolidate existing air pollution control requirements and does not authorize new sources of pollution or increases in emissions from existing sources. Compliance with the requirements of this permit will not result in violations of applicable air quality standards that were designed to protect human health and the environment. Before a decision is made on whether Major Source Operating Permit 107-0003 is to be issued, the department will review and respond to any written comments received during the public comment period and comments submitted during this hearing. Thank you.
I now recognize Mr. Devin Jenkins to present a statement on behalf of the department's land division.
Good evening. My name is Devin Jenkins, and on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, we thank you for the participation in the permitting process for the Arrowhead landfill Permit Number 53-03. Perry County Associates LLC submitted to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, or ADM, an application to renew the solid waste disposal permit for the municipal solid waste landfill known as the Arrowhead landfill. The Arrowhead landfill is located in Sections 21, 22, 27, and 28, Township 17 North, Range 6 East in Perry County, Alabama. The permitted facility consists of 973.85 acres, with 425.33 acres permitted for disposal operations. The waste stream for the Arrowhead landfill would remain non-hazardous solid wastes, non-infectious potable and non-potable waste, including but not limited to household garbage, commercial waste, industrial waste, construction and demolition waste, and other similar-type materials, and special waste approved by ADM. The service area for Arrowhead landfill would remain the states of Alabama, Arkansas, Connecticut, Delaware, Florida, Georgia, Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, Kentucky, Louisiana, Maine, Maryland, and Massachusetts, Michigan, Minnesota, Mississippi, Missouri, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New York, North Carolina, Ohio, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, South Carolina, Tennessee, Texas, Vermont, Virginia, West Virginia, and Wisconsin. The maximum average daily volume of waste disposed at the Arrowhead landfill would remain 15,000 tons per day. This application requested that all conditions of the current permit for the Arrowhead landfill, including previously approved variances and special conditions, be granted in the renewed permit. Based on our review of the permit application, the department has made a preliminary determination that the proposed permit renewal would be in compliance with the applicable state and federal solid waste disposal requirements, and thus protective of public health and the environment. The proposed permit includes the following conditions. One, upon renewal, the permit would be valid for a 10-year period. Two, the permity would maintain a composite liner as described in the permit and permit application, including a leachate collection system. Three, the permity would conduct groundwater monitoring semiannually. Four, the permity would conduct explosive gas monitoring quarterly. Five, the permity would maintain the integrity of the final cover system throughout the life of the permit and post-closure period. Six, the permity would at all times properly operate and maintain the facility and all systems in accordance with the application and the permit. And seven, the permity would obtain the approval of ADM for any change or modification to the facility or a system which might otherwise result in non-compliance with the permit or ADM's administrative code. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide an opportunity to receive public comment regarding the application and proposed permit. The department welcomes your input to this process and will consider all technical comments prior to making a final decision concerning the issuance of this permit, and will develop a response to comments, which will become part of the public record and be posted to the department's e-file system. Thank you again for participating in the hearing.
We will now proceed to the receipt of public comments from elected officials. First, I recognize Commissioner Cedric Hudson. If you wouldn't mind, please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name and the office that you hold. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Cedric Hudson. I'm Perry County Commissioner, District 4. Let me spell out the name.
Patrick. Yes, please.
C-E-D-R-I-C. Hudson, M-A-U-D, S-O-N-G. And I'm coming to speak about the permit, Permit Number 107-0003, and Permit Number 53-0003. I just had like a quick comment about this. My concern is the way the permit was put together. A lot of people have came to me and spoken about distrust, discomfort, about feeling like they're not even involved in the process. And if you look around town, you can see there's a disconnect between the landfill and the city. There's really no relationship. So that's not a good corporate relationship with the value of the city of Uniontown. As far as the county, we don't have a great relationship because we rarely meet and talk. Like, I've never met or talked with the landfill owner. And I know we've changed hands maybe two or three times. Never decided to talk down the road. That's my major concern with the permit process, as far as being open to everyone, so everyone can get these. I understand the science of the landfill. I know it's not as dangerous as some people make it out to be, but that doesn't take away from people's anxiety and fears. And those fears, as you know, cause a lot of problems and make everybody might feel guilty. That's why you're in a lot of phone calls dating. That's why everybody's falling into it, and have a lot of misinformation out there because information does not flow freely. And that is my biggest concern with the permit process, how the company went about putting it together. I wish they would have had these discussions a year or two months ago. They would have made things a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We may discuss. Just clarify what you want me to refer to.
Okay.
You're good. You're good. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that.
We will now proceed to the receipt of comments from members of the public. As indicated in the public notice for this hearing, oral testimony for each registered speaker is limited to seven minutes. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented within a seven-minute timeframe, please use your time for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing for placement in the record. First, I will recognize Portia Shepherd. Please step up to the microphone and restate your name in the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record, and your testimony will be recorded. Please also remember this is not a question-and-answer session, and please reference which permit you are commenting on in your comment. Thank you.
Oh, well, I need to get that permit number because I don't know about Harvard. What is the permit number?
You could say land or air permit would be appropriate.
My name is Portia Shepherd, and I am coming on the land and air permit for Arrowhead landfill. I represent myself as a citizen here in the city of Uniontown, Alabama, and I do not think that they should be, they should receive another permit in our city. The landfill has not been friendly to our city. Look at our town. They haven't contributed anything to our town. The only thing that they have done is buy book bags every year for local organizations to give out to the kids. They don't do anything for our town. They haven't contributed anything financially to our town, and therefore, I don't think they should be in there. Outside of the slush and coal ash that they have in our town, outside of the fact that when you go out there, one side has animals and buzzers on it, the other side doesn't, and the reason why is because animals know that it's poisonous stuff out there. And so, for them to come up with all these things about, you know, how they're in compliance with you guys, I do think that it is not a good thing for the people of our area. Another problem that I want to discuss is you guys' compliance and your checklist that you give them. You know, if I want to do something wrong, if you tell me that I need to have ABC correct, if I want to do something wrong, I'm going to put it in a part that I know you're not going to check. So I think ADM needs to make sure that they are looking at every corner and every possible thing that they are doing at their landfill. People discuss about when trains come, and how when those trains come, the next morning they wake up and they can't breathe. That is a problem, and it should not be ignored simply because they are millionaires and we are no-airs. It doesn't matter what our finances are, we are human beings. You wouldn't do this in Guntersville. You wouldn't do this in Huntsville. You wouldn't do that in those other places that are predominantly white, but not just by race. I want to be clear on this. Not just about race, but about the educational level of a particular area. It is deliberately done to poor marginalized people, the same way they did it up in Morgan County, and Morgan County got that cleared up, the same way we want to get it cleared up here, the same way the people of Ripton, Alabama, stood up for their community and said that they were not going to have a landfill come, and used Uniontown as an example to stop it from happening, and got legislation passed off the backs of the people in this community. And if this community is to be heard, they need to be heard, not just for record purposes to say, "Well, we did have a community meeting. We did go and have the people give a voice." No, that's not the important thing. The important thing of it is that it is something going on down there that is harmful to this community. It has hurt this community financially. It has hurt this community economically. It has hurt this community that the state gets a dollar a ton, the county gets a dollar a ton, and the city that is enduring this mess is getting nothing? Who are we to these people? And so, ADM, I put this on you. I was at a conference, at a wastewater conference, in Mobile this past week. One of the most frustrating things I heard one of your employees say was the fact that Uniontown was not in compliance with their wastewater system. And I know I'm talking about the landfill and the land and air. I just have to make this point. But they know that Harvest Select has, has contributed to the wastewater problem in this area, yet you're finding a city where you know the information. And that's what I'm saying about this department. This department knows what is going on in this community, and we are being ignored, and I am tired of it. I have been in this community my whole life. My aunt Stair, who worked for Waifo for years cleaning up behind me, by the time she got a chance to get a real paycheck, that was in an opt-in, opt-out of Social Security. So by the time they made a mandatory, she paid little in, but she was at retirement age. So she was only getting $515 a month. Her husband, at the time, before he died, he was in the Army, and one of the things that he was able to get, he was able to get benefits. So when he died, she was able to get a little bit more. But in between that timeframe, they struggled. And the thing of it is, I watched her deteriorate before my eyes. And at first, I ignored it because I was doing my own thing politically. I was working on political campaigns. I was in Iowa working for, for the Hillary campaign, and then I ended in 2010 with the Alabama Democratic Party. I'm publicly a libertarian now because by being involved in this fight, I realized both parties have contributed to the downfall of the people that I love. But I watched her, and my granddaddy, she died on a Sunday. My granddaddy died that Wednesday of the same week, and still, it did not click to me what was happening, until I began my research, and I began to see that the same sicknesses that they endured were the same thing that is happening that is caused in Kingston, Tennessee. Those same people endure what the people that I love endure. So it's something going on, and it is a responsibility of a state agency to look out for the people that I love, and not just for a job, not just because somebody appointed you to a position, but because it is your duty to serve us and to find out what is happening here in our area. And we deserve that respect. We deserve that respect. We deserve to be heard, and we deserve to say that we don't want this mess in our town anymore, and that we're not going to put things in order to ensure that they don't. We got reports from, from cities. I got pictures, and when I do my regular report, I will submit those, of even the employees being tired and seeing the things that are happening, seeing them spraying out their stuff, and then lying to you because they know when you're coming. Somebody tell them, and then in return of the fact they hide it. We're tired of it. Even the employees are tired of it. And we are saying that enough is enough. And if you give the opportunity to the people to do a question and answer, you can explain it, and toughen up. You're a state agency. You, you work for us, not the other way around, despite the room that God has provided you to go in. You are an employee of the people, and it is your responsibility to ensure that we get the information and that we get recorded online, which I appreciate, but we also get an opportunity to be served correctly. And that is making sure that the landfill is held accountable for what they have done to the Uniontown, Alabama, community. My name is Portia Shepherd. I am the executive director of Black Belt Women Riot, a gender and environmental justice organization right here in the city of Uniontown.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Now we will recognize Marcia Brigans. Excuse me. Thank you. Please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name in the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. And please also remember that this is not a question-and-answer session, and if you would not mind, please also reference which permit you are commenting on, the air or the land permit. Thank you.
My name is Marcia Brigans. Want to speak?
Yes, please.
M-A-R-C-I-A, last name Brigans, B-R-I-G-G-I-N-S. I am a parent of two in Uniontown, where we write the poetry. Let me know when you can speak.
Go ahead.
I'm referring to the air and land permit for the landfill. So my question will be, for the quote asked listed as the greatest spill in the nation greater than the east field, ADM, what are you guys' steps to take for the public safety to ensure no toxins in the air is being exposed, when it's been reported on record that 30 deaths in Kingston has been given after the spill of the cleanup? Who's to say it's still not being affected today? My other question will be for any incidents, I'm not sure if you guys are involved in incidents of deaths that's been there, but what about the monthly check-ins? Why per Chief Heather Jones telling me back in January that the landfill is made aware of when they're actually coming and what they're actually checking for, month after month? And there's only two people that attend, which is someone in compliance, and then we have our chairman for Perry County. I feel as though if they're telling them, obviously, they're only going to fix what's actually being checked. One of my questions I ask about what steps, causes, and procedures are being listed to track what states you guys actually receive trash from, and what is being received and how you guys actually track it? From what I was told, Jared Kelly stated that there's a viral report given every three months. Also, what toxins are being received to be considered as household trash? Unfortunately, we have documentation and pictures of toxins being transported, human toxins, as well as vegetable toxins, which are not household toxins. So my next question will also be, what is ADM doing to ensure that they're in compliance for this particular permit for the air and land quality? At this time, this is all the questions that I have.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I will now recognize Lynn Phillips. I will now recognize Lynn Phillips. Good evening. Please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. And also remember that this is not a question and answer session. And also, if you would please um reference the permit, land, or air that you are making your comment on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Henry Lynn Phillips. Uh, I live in Hoobra, Alabama. Um, I had, I'm representing myself in the middle. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, I um uh have been watching uh environmental issues in Black Belt and Uniontown for a number of years. Uh, and my comments are in regard to the solid waste permit, number five-three-zero-three. Uh, my background is I'm currently retired. Uh, spent forty years as a professional engineer. Twenty of that uh has spent in operating water wastewater facilities and the other twenty percent was operating Sub-Tile C and Sub-Tile D uh facilities all across the United States. So uh I'm making these comments as a uh operator of both Sub-Tile D and Sub-Tile C facilities, uh not in Alabama, but elsewhere in the United States. Uh, again, these, my comments are entirely my own. Uh, I will be using primarily the terms Sub-Tile C and Sub-Tile D, not the equivalent Alabama section, so please forgive me for that if you have, if you have questions about that. Say, say so. Uh, the first part of my comments are dealing with large Sub-Tile D facilities and their impact on the state of Alabama in general. Uh, I had previously made these comments uh on February seventeenth to Commissioner of the Floor and never got a receipt, uh, a reply to those. So I, I'd first like to uh express my disappointment that A.D.M. did not seem fit to reply to me at that time. I'm, I'm making them again. Uh, since two thousand and six, there have been multiple large landfills, Sub-Tile D, uh, intended to be sited or sited in, in Alabama. Uh, this became an issue in twenty, twenty-eleven. Uh, then the then Governor Hunt issued a moratorium and an executive order at that time uh suspending the signing of all new landfills of because of controversies associated with that. The legislature also passed legislation equivalent to the executive order. And the uh Auburn University issued a study on how best to manage large facilities like Arrowhead in the state. Uh, after that, nothing was done by, by state government or A.D.M. Is now, um, twenty-twenty-two and A.D.M. is yet to comply with Executive Order number eight, uh House Bill four oh six or House Bill five oh six. Uh, the next point I'd like to make is looking at the history of the Perry County Associates uh facility. It was always intended as a municipal solid waste landfill. The original contract with Perry County in nineteen ninety-nine explicitly states that this landfill is intended for it to be a regional municipal solid waste landfill. Uh, we received its first permit in July two thousand and six. And then in uh January two thousand and nine, it received an increase by both uh A.D.M. and Perry County to fifteen thousand tons a day, which makes this facility one of the largest in the United States and not the world. And speaking from experience, this is an extremely large facility serving a very large area. Uh, in two thousand and nine, PCA began accepting fly ash from the Kingston uh steam plant, uh Ashville in Tennessee. Uh, that was actually a diversion in the business model. Eventually, it was seventy-three and a half million cubic yards uh by December twenty-two. Arrowhead became known as the coal ash landfill, but in reality, it has always, its business model has always been to be a, a very large, regional, uh if not continental, uh solid waste landfill. If you look at uh Arrowhead Associates uh website, uh if you go through the types of waste they accept, it's basically everything except hazardous waste and that sort of stuff. So that's, that's the magnitude of their operation. Uh, the other issue now is that Arrowhead uh is owned thirteen point three percent by Clarivest Group of Toronto Canada Investment Banking Group. That group also owns fourteen percent of a waste collection company in Long Island, New York, uh than Winter's Brothers uh Waste System. Given the size of Winter's Brothers Trash Collection System and the environmental situation on Long Island, the last, the sole remaining landfill is closing next year, it can be reasonably expected uh from public records that all municipal solid waste from Long Island and the Southern Connecticut is gonna be coming to Uniontown, Alabama. This is already a very large facility. It's gonna get nothing but larger in the next, next couple of years. Now, I want to talk about a lesson from Alabama history. In nineteen seventy-seven, a small company called Resource Industries purchased three hundred acres of land outside Pinal, Alabama, which is a sub county, just a couple counties over. That eventually became, by nineteen seventy-eight, became a chemical waste landfill. And uh I'm older than you, most of the people here in this room, but you do need research on the uh, the chemical waste management facility. Uh, it was a nightmare for state of Alabama. And uh, you know, my comments are going into detail for those of you who are not aware of it. But the, the important thing is the number of transactions going in that chem, chem waste landfill, which was a Sub-Tile C landfill, uh hazardous waste, not Sub-Tile D. Arrowhead is taking five point five million tons, or is permitted to accept five point five million tons of waste per year, which is seven and a half, seven and a half, seven times more than chem waste at its peak. Uh, so that went on for twenty years. Finally, the legislature stepped in, placed. Am I out of time?
If you can wrap up your comment in a sentence or two, uh I'm also prepared to take any prepared written statement you may have or you can also submit in writing. Yes.
Uh, the primary point I wanted to make is given the magnitude of this facility, of this facility and its kind of revenue the state is taking in now and will take in the future, I recommend that you establish a resident inspector.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your time.
Sally McGee?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now recognize Mary Schaefer. Good evening. Please step up to the microphone and please clearly restate your name and any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone so that we can have an accurate record of your testimony to be recorded. Please also remember this is not a question and answer session. And if you wouldn't mind, please uh let us know which of the permits, the air and land permit that your comments are referencing. Thank you.
My name is Mary Schaefer. I'm a resident of the city of Uniontown. I'm commenting on the Arrowhead landfill draft permit, number fifty-three oh three for Perry County. Um, I have very significant concerns about the renewal of this permit. There are serious ongoing compliance matters related to the operation of Arrowhead landfill. So I'm asking for A.D.M. in the appropriate time to address following comments. First topic is A.D.M.'s failure to enter critical data into the E-file system. On February eleventh of twenty-twenty-two, my sister Alice Wong and I each called in complaints to A.D.M. and gave pertinent information regarding Arrowhead landfill problems and our serious permit violations that we had observed to Nicole Shaw. A.D.M. personnel later conducted three inspections on three-one-twenty-two, on three-two-twenty-two, and on three-twenty-one-twenty-two in response to our complaints. These three inspections were documented in an evaluation dated three-twenty-four-twenty-two, on which date Nicole advised us that our complaints had been entered on the E-file system. The data that was showing under actions on our complaints do indicate that the same problems and or permit violations were confirmed during the A.D.M. inspections. Our complaints noted Arrowhead's very serious and continuing permit violations of uncovered waste within the active and closed cells, many buzzards flying over and roosting on the landfill waste cells, and of course attacking the uncovered waste, litter blowing from the cells, and very unpleasant odors emanating from the landfill. However, there seems to be no record in the E-file system under the category of any inspections or permits that the three inspections I just mentioned were ever accomplished by A.D.M. personnel on the above mentioned dates. This information is buried in the E-file system inside our particular individual complaints. So no one will see it unless they happen to read our particular complaints. Therefore, we feel that our complaints did not receive the proper attention from A.D.M. After the three signed visits and confirmation of our complaints, there was not any enforcement action taken to acknowledge that these events have existed. There was no penalty. There was no fines set. There was no notice of warning. There was no notice of violation, any one of which might deter Arrowhead from its continued mishandling of its waste disposal obligations and its abuse of the citizens living nearby. To compound this mystery, there is an inspection dated four-one-twenty-two by Devin Jenkins in which he acknowledges that the uncovered trash and leachate problems noted on three-twenty-one-twenty-two were resolved. Obviously, he knew about the three-one-twenty-one-twenty-two status of Arrowhead. However, his report raises the additional question of the quote "leachate problems" that he described as having been noted on three-twenty-one-twenty-two and then as having been resolved on four-eleven-twenty-two. A leachate discharge, seepage, escape, spill, or other mishap would be a very serious permit violation and violation of the Clean Water Act about which we now have no detailed information other than again realizing that no enforcement action has ensued. Please explain, why is this? It seems reasonable to ask if A.D.M. is covering up for Arrowhead until their permit is renewed. A.D.M. personnel must never conceal any Arrowhead permit violations at any time and most especially not at the precise time that the permit is being considered for renewal and due diligence, transparency, and accountability are required. A.D.M. must investigate these glaring discrepancies in its own activities and make certain that all pertinent data is provided to the public before the Arrowhead permit is considered for renewal. It seems appropriate to ask for the extension of the timeframe for consideration of this renewal so that all data will be placed on the E-file system and ample time given to interested parties to review it. My second topic is leachate collection system failure. Maintaining the integrity of the landfill liner is one of the most critical aspects of protecting groundwater and surface water quality. However, Arrowhead landfill has violated its permit by neglecting its responsibility to properly operate the leachate collection system, thereby imperiling the quality of both the groundwater and the surface water. On three-twelve-twenty-one, approximately a year ago, in response to a host of odor complaints from nearby residents, A.D.M. conducted a complaint inspection. This inspection was not a routine compliance inspection. A.D.M. only conducted the inspection due to a flurry of citizen complaints. During the inspection, the A.D.M. inspector observed that an emergency indicator light was quote flashing red unquote on the control pipe panel for sub pump five. The high-level alarm was tripped because the leachate level had greatly exceeded the safe operating limit. The permit requires that the leachate collection system be operated to maintain a leachate, leachate depth of less than twelve inches above the liner. But in fact, at the time of A.D.M.'s inspection on three-twelve-twenty-one, the control panel revealed that the depth of leachate was an astounding one hundred eighty-eight and a half inches above the line, a depth more than fifteen times the acceptable limit. This event constituted an extremely dangerous, dangerous permit violation and emergency situation, having the potential not only to breach the landfill liner system and release a massive, massive volume of toxic leachate, but also to place in jeopardy the surface water and the groundwater. A.D.M.'s discovery of the presence of such an excessive volume of leachate above the liner is evidence that Arrowhead landfill has violated its permit by not properly handling the leachate.
Excuse me for interrupting you, but that's time. Would you be able to wrap up your comment in a sentence or two? And if you have any prepared statements that you, or you can give to me tonight or submit further written comments by July twentieth?
You don't mean July twenty-two?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
The comment period has been extended to July twenty-one.
Oh, really?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I do have a lot more comments and I understand that um if y'all don't, if you don't run out of time, you might be willing to recall me to give you some of my, more of my comments in person.
Tonight, we're limiting comments to seven minutes and comments over seven minutes will submit the rest of your statement in writing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute break and ensure that there is no one else who wants to make a comment at this time. So we will return at six fifty-five. It's now six fifty-five and we're resuming on the record from our break. There are no further registered speakers, so please be advised that unless otherwise notified, the public comment period will end at five P.M. on Wednesday, July twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. All comments must be received at the offices of the department in Montgomery by that time. After consideration of all oral and written comments, the department will make its determinations regarding the proposed permit action and prepare responses to all relevant comments received. Thank you for your participation this evening and this hearing is adjourned.